Anything to order?
Hey Mayor, said the broadcast is not working.
Sean.
Here.
Gillen.
Here.
Harrod.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Shaw. Salter.
Here.
New Coram.
Thank you. Y'all would stand and join me in Lord's Prayer. My Father.
Good Lord. In heaven, I will be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory of heaven. Amen.
And also join me in flag submission. Attention, position, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved and with the same names one nation under God, indivisible, and free to govern the world.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, move.
By Commissioner Gillen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salter. Is there any discussion? I call the question.
Sorry Ben, I didn't hear you.
Motion carries. Six oh. Item two, citizens' participation. We have a three-minute limit and a 12-minute limit per topic. If you would like to address us, come to the podium, sign in, introduce yourself, and speak your piece.
Hall, you don't have anything to say.
Oh, wait. Hold on, I do have something.
Trains, planes, whatever. I'll.
This is awesome. No, this is good. This is a good one. So, um, hold on. Oh, the pen's dying. All right, well, y'all know where I look.
Hold on.
We'll make it official.
It's designed to shut you up.
Probably. Isn't it always? Thank you. Okay, so this Saturday downtown on Main Street at our art studio, 112 and a half, at 112 and a half East Main, we are partnering with the St. Anthony Shawnee Hospital to present an art show that is dedicated to breast cancer warriors. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Women and men have been directly and indirectly affected by breast cancer, and this is a show that is featuring a physician from St. Anthony Shawnee Hospital to come and speak. We'll have education materials there, and physician will be available to give some counsel. Not medical, no medical, yeah. It's just to talk informally. But we'll have our art show opening this Saturday night at 6:30 to 9:30 at the studio. That's 112 and a half East Main Street. All proceeds will be donated locally to the Look Good, Feel Better campaign, which is part of the American Cancer Society program here locally. All proceeds, all gallery commissions, everything that we earn during the month of October at our art studio is being donated locally for women who are going through cancer treatment here in Shawnee. So, I invite you to come out and say hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
You travel in here.
I see that.
I'm Kate Joyce. I'm the cruise director at the Shawnee Senior Center. And we are having another dance this month. So on the 14th of October, in the municipal auditorium, y'all can come and move to Motown. It's gonna be awesome. It starts at 7 o'clock. It'll run until 10:00, and the doors open at 6:30. It's only $5 to get in and come and dance. We have a trophy for costumes close enough to Halloween that if you wanted to break out your platform shoes, you're welcome to do so. So, I hope y'all come and join us. We had a couple of y'all come last time to our 50's dance, so maybe y'all will do it again. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Item three, mayor's proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Thank you, Mayor.
Here.
Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Shawnee is committed to the enduring safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, fires are serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at their greatest risk from fire. And whereas the U.S. Fire Department responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths. Whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than over home construction. Many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gas and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. These conditions contribute to a much smaller window of timeframe for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape in time from smoke alarm sounds. Whereas a home fire escape plan provides a skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. A home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, a meeting place outside for everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. Home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas Shawnee's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Whereas Shawnee's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas 2017 Fire Prevention Week, "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, I, Richard Finley, Mayor of the City of Shawnee, by the authority vested me, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, to be Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item four, consider a resolution of appreciation to Clarice Brock for over 35 years of service to the city of Shawnee and presentation to Clarice Brock.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner.
Harrod.
Harrod. Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call the question.
I'll read the resolution into the record briefly.
If you have, if you have to.
The resolution expresses appreciation to Clarice Brock for over 35 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy to be presented to Clarice Brock.
Now call the question. Motion carries six oh.
Yes, presentation.
Do you want to do that?
Shit it down, the other one. Done both.
Resolution number 6550. Resolution expressing appreciation to Clarice Brock for over 35 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy be presented to Clarice Brock. Whereas October 5th, 1981 was a significant day in the city of Shawnee for the reason that Clarice Brock commenced her employment with the city as Secretary Two in the city clerk's office. She was promoted to Secretary Two, Clerk Two, on June 23rd, 1985. On August 7th, 2005, Clarice was promoted to Fire Department Secretary and transferred to the Fire Department. Clarice elected to retire effective June 3rd, 2017. Whereas Clarice Brock has demonstrated her ability to meet the challenges given her with dedication and loyalty throughout the years, and where it is both fitting and proper for the city of Shawnee to recognize Clarice Brock for her many contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express to Clarice Brock their appreciation for her many years of service to the city and its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the official record of the city of Shawnee, and a copy here I be presenting to Clarice with best wishes for her in many future years of happiness. Thank you. Item five, consider a resolution of appreciation to Jim Van Antwerp for over 26 years of service to the city of Shawnee and presentation to Jim Van Antwerp.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bishong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution expressing appreciation to Jim Van Antwerp for over 26 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and authorizing a copy be presented to Jim Van Antwerp.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Resolution 6551. Resolution expressing appreciation to Jim Van Antwerp for over 26 years of loyal service to the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, directing that said resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, and authorizing a copy be presented to Jim Van Antwerp. Whereas September 9th, 1991 was a significant day in the city of Shawnee for the reason that Jim Van Antwerp commenced his employment with the city of Shawnee as a firefighter. During his career, Jim achieved the rank of Fire Equipment Operator on September 5th, 1993, Captain on January 7th, 1996, and Battalion Chief on July 1st, 2001. Jim elected to retire effectively January 21st, 2017. Whereas Jim Van Antwerp has demonstrated his ability to meet the challenges given him with dedication and loyalty throughout the years, and whereas it is both fitting and proper for the city of Shawnee to recognize Jim for his many contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Shawnee, that they hereby express to Jim Van Antwerp their appreciation for his many years of service to the city and to its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the official records of the city of Shawnee, and that a copy here I be presented to Jim with best wishes for his many future years of happiness. Item six, administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, we have one tonight. Chief Tischer, here. Lieutenant Charlie provided.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I just want to speak to you about a few things tonight, if I could. I'll be real brief. I do want to, before we get started though, I want to just speak just a minute, if I could, about the two people that you honor tonight. Fire Department took a big hit this year. We lost, those are big shoes to fill. Clarice has been our secretary for 12 years, and Jim, like I said, has been with us for 26 years, and was Battalion Chief for 16 years. They leave a lot of big shoes to fill, and just can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that they've done for us, and how much I appreciate them both. They've been great, great employees for the city of Shawnee, and we miss them. We miss them a lot. So I appreciate you doing that tonight. Two things I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I appreciate the recognizing Fire Prevention Week this year. It's very important to us. This is a very important, busy time of the year for us. Our Fire Clowns started their presentations this week. They've done three already today. They've been to three schools already. They'll do 17 shows, 17 presentations over this week and also Monday of next week. Got to brag on those guys. They, there's, we have nine Fire Clowns this year, along with the two sound engineers. This is a program that they've been working on for a couple of months now. They build all their own props. They load everything up in a trailer, take it to all the local schools. This week, they will present that presentation to over 4,000 young people in our community and surrounding communities. And it's always the message, almost just, a lot of it is very much what the mayor read in the proclamation. They always hit on the topics of stop, drop, and roll, 911, know the way out, know the way out of your home, everything. And it's amazing to hear the young people yell the stuff right back at them. They know this stuff. They hear it every year, and it's a very, very beneficial program. It's an all-volunteer program, these guys. It's a passion for them, and they represent our department and the city of Shawnee in just a tremendous, tremendous light, and just can't brag on them enough. So, this year, this is the 25th year of that program, and so that's a very long-running program. Chief Roberts, who unfortunately we lost earlier this year, that program started while he was chief, and that's something that's continued on for a long time now, and we're very proud to keep that tradition going. And it's probably, I know it's the best clown program in the state of Oklahoma. It's probably the longest-running as well. I don't know that for sure, but I will go out on a limb and say it probably is. Like I said, it's, one other thing I wanted to mention about that as well, is we'll have a public performance this Thursday night. Everyone's invited, I want to invite the entire community to that performance. That's going to be at the Shawnee Middle School Gymnasium on North Union, at Union and 45th, and that'll be at 7 o'clock on Thursday night. So the entire community's invited. We're going to have refreshments, and love to see everybody out there. The other thing I want to talk about, we take Fire Prevention Week, and we try to expand it out to more than a week. Actually, Fire Prevention Week nationally is not till next year. We started doing our clown program this week to kind of meet some of the scheduling requirements of the local schools, but we also are going to do a mass smoke detector installation. We've done a few of these in the last few years. Fire Marshal David Anderson has coordinated that program for us, along with the Red Cross. Our local chapel of the Red Cross has been very, very helpful. Shelley Webb with the Red Cross, can't brag on them enough. They provide the detectors, and we provide the manpower, along with their volunteers. And we're going to do that, again, this year on Saturday, October 28th, is when we were able to get that scheduled. And what we're going to do, we're going to, in the past year, we've been able to start south of Highland and on the east side of town, and we're working our way west. So the goal, this, last year, we installed over 400 smoke detectors in the community, and those were donated by the Red Cross, and we're going to aim to expand on that. This year, we're hoping to get everything, our goal for Saturday, October 28th, is to complete everything, all, go door-to-door. Everybody that wants one gets one, and that'll be, that will complete everything south of Highland in the community. So that's our goal, is to wrap that up on Saturday, October 28th, and then we'll schedule another one probably in the spring and start moving our way. Our goal is to get through the entire community and go door-to-door with that and offer a smoke detector. We feel like that's, along with the clown program, where you get the education, the smoke detector, working smoke detector in your home, there's no bigger bang for the buck you can get as far as life safety, and the awareness that it gives you if there's something going wrong in your home is just invaluable. So a working smoke detector is of the utmost importance. So I just wanted to share those two things, and one more thing I wanted to share is to just remind everyone, everyone listening, that if you need a smoke detector, call our department. We'll be happy to, if you live in the city limits, we'll be happy to come out and install one. The Red Cross is providing those detectors. 878-1671, if you'll call Danny, who are our new Fire Department Administrative Assistant. She'll be happy to get that scheduled, and our guys will come out and install that. So, just want to make sure everyone's aware of that, and with that, that's all I had. I'll try to answer any questions.
Great programs. Will the clown program be available on the website?
It will, it will. We will have it videoed, and we'll have it on the website. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, sir.
Commissioner comments? None?
I think it's a blessing to have a very short meeting today.
I have a couple. I do want to mention that I appreciate the chief and Justin for working on that change order and getting that price down on that. It's a really, I felt like that thing was out of line, and I do appreciate all your work. It's good to see Steve sitting over there. Steve, good to have you back. And this weekend, the planes, trains, and is it, is that this weekend?
Yes.
That's what I've been, yeah. It's Saturday. And the, I, well, listen, it's not, but on the news about, of course, about the deal in Las Vegas, but, you know, I just remind people, when you're at some kind of event or something like that, even right here at City Hall, or at your church, or whatever, you need to kind of be cognizant of how to escape and things like that, and what's around you. So that's one thing that's pointing out, that, you know, in a concert or something like that, you know, an outside one, it's even worse, because there's no, nothing to get behind or under, or whatever else. So, but I would remind people of that. And again, I appreciate your work on that. Have they started doing the change order yet, or do you know?
They looked, they started on the civil structure enhancements yesterday. They have, they're, they're, they're allowing the addition, the slab for the addition.
Down. Okay, good.
Nothing? Ben?
Yes. I sit on several committees with the Blue Zones, and we have begun having a discussion on what our city tobacco policy is going to be. So this would be the time that if you have some strong feelings one way or another, to begin to provide that feedback. You can do that to me, or you can do it to the Blue Zones office, because it will be coming.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Agenda. Item one, consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Would you approve?
Commissioner Gillen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rutherford. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six zero. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. With, item one, consider approval of the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion to approve that.
Does it move?
Commissioner Bishong.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Salter. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Motion carries six oh. Consideration and possible action regarding a partnership with the Kickapoo Tribe of Oklahoma to host a household hazardous waste collection event in the city of Shawnee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. This agenda item is a result of a collaborative project that was brought to us from the Kickapoo Tribe. And this evening in the audience are two members of the tribe that are employed by the tribe, Darren Shields, the Environmental Director, and Daniel Wynn, who is the Environmental Specialist for the Kickapoo Tribe. They have received a federal grant to provide hazardous waste mitigation and elimination, and they have some funding left over from that grant, and would like to partner with us and other tribal entities to host a hazardous waste collection event in the city of Shawnee. This is something that some of you have talked to me about previously. It's an event that we have not held in for a number of years. Since 2008 or so, we have had an agreement with the city of Oklahoma City where residents can take hazardous waste to a disposal site in Oklahoma City and for a cost dispose of it. But of course, there's pretty hefty fees involved, and then of course, the time to transport that. And so this would actually be a free event that any city limit, any resident of the city limits, as well as any tribal member of the Kickapoo Tribe or other participating tribes could partake in for no cost. We met on this last week, and the Central Disposal Firm has also authorized us to use their site for the collection point, which makes a lot of sense, because citizens are already used to going there for recycling or bulk trash, et cetera. So what I'm asking for tonight is your authorization to forge this partnership with the Kickapoo Tribe and to expend city funds up to $25,000. I don't have a firm cost, unfortunately, at this point, because it depends on how many partners we get, and we're also looking at firms that can do this work, and looking at what the cost, what the final cost may be. We've been in contact with cities, with other cities, including Norman and Stillwater, that hold these events on a regular basis, and looked at their process, and who they use, and what their fees are, and so we're hopeful we can be, you know, really good stewards of the grant money and city money. So hopefully, our portion will be far less than $25,000. But I would like your authorization tonight, if you feel, if you so choose, so we can move forward, because we'll have to coordinate this, do publicity and advertising, and get this done before Thanksgiving. So we're looking at probably mid-November to host this event. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have funds properly authorized in the budget?
Yes, sir. This would come from the municipal authority funds, and we do have a contingency fund with approximately $100,000 in it, so this would come from that.
Would this be something that would be a yearly event-type thing, or monthly, or how would it be?
I think if this goes well, we would like to do it on an annual basis. The city of Stillwater does it twice a year, actually. Norman does it once a year, and so this is a really good pilot project for us, if you will. We'll get a good idea, the turnout, and the quantities of hazardous waste, and the expense associated with that. So, yes, sir, I would like to do this on an annual basis.
So the point is, I guess, that people then, if they understood the process was in play, they would save those things rather than put them places they shouldn't be, and then have it collected in a single time. And if it was something they could count on, even some larger amounts of items could probably fall into that. I guess there'd be rules as to what it would be, and who would be involved, as far as that's concerned, and property advertisers, you mentioned, too.
Yes, sir. And the most common materials that are submitted at these collection sites are old paints, and oils, and fuels, and those sorts of things. Also batteries, and pharmaceuticals, things like that. But in talking with the other cities, it seems to be primarily paints and.
Yeah.
If you'd not had a chance to visit the Stillwater facility, it's really, really something that I'd been up there several years, but we went up there before we did our transfer station, and they do have people that meets at the gate and help you, you know, help people with batteries and oil and stuff like that. They take about everything at their transfer station.
Great.
It is a good deal.
Any other comments? Is there, have you all had any discussion about including other regional communities? I know Central Disposal serves a number of communities around, and is there merit to discussing that, or is?
I think there is merit, and we did.
That too big a scope for your pilot.
Yes, sir. We did have the discussion. I think what we'd like to do is incorporate those additional communities, also, you know, rural county residents that are unincorporated. We'd like to do that next year, and so this would be a good example and test case for us, so we really get a better idea on quantity and turnout, and then if we're overwhelmed just with the city limit turnout, then we're going to have to, you know, kind of rethink the more regional collection idea for next year, make it multiple days, or choose a different site that can better accommodate, or extend the hours, those sorts of things. So absolutely, that's in the planning phases. This grant that the Kickapoo Tribe has, is, those funds have to be expended by the end of the calendar year, so we're kind of pressed for time. of the calendar year, so we're kind of pressed for time as well, unfortunately.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve?
I would move to approve that.
Commissioner Gillum, is there a second?
Okay.
Bouchon? Is there any further discussion? Call the question. Motion is approved, six zero, and I'd like to express my appreciation to the Kikapus for bringing this opportunity to partner together to us. We're always interested in trying to be a good neighbor when we can, so, thank you very much. Is there any new business?
Yes, sir, there's none.
We are adjourned. It's 5 till 7.